Good morning. It's nine o'clock. We will call to order the Douglas County Board of Commissioner meeting for the day. For the record, there's a copy of the Open Meetings Act on the north wall of legislative chambers. There's an automatic defibrillator in the back of the room if anybody needs that for health reasons. And also, if you would, to silence or turn off your phone, I ask everybody to stand for the Pledge of Legions.
Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undeguised, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're now called to order the Douglas County Board of Equalization meeting. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson.
Here.
Commissioner Boyle is absent. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Here.
Commissioner Duda.
Here.
Commissioner Kraft.
Here.
Commissioner Morgan.
Here.
Mr. Chair.
Here. Letter A is approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, December 11, 2018. Letter B is a call for a meeting set Tuesday, January 8, 2019, as the date for hearing on certified assessments and corrections. What's the will of the board? Is that motion by Commissioner Duda, second by Commissioner Morgan? Please vote.
Motion passes. All present voting yes.
Item C is citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for a citizen to comment on a Board of Equalization-related item not listed on the agenda. Are there any citizens' comments? Seeing none. Will resolutions D, E, F, G, and H are there? What's the will of the board?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Kraft, second by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote.
Motion passes. All present voting yes.
Item I is a protest of certified assessment corrections at 1-8293, corrected value for 1-3808-NORT, 324th Street. Michael Hannis, Mr. Hannis. Mr. Hannis, please note the light system there.
Good morning. Michael Hannis, 1-3808-NORTH, 324TH STREET, VALLEY, NEBRASKA. I'm the landowner and taxpayer. Last time that we met about this property, the board was deciding whether or not to grant agriculture for a five, roughly, acre piece of the 20-acre parcel, and it did. And I was grateful for the little bit of accomplishment that I got there. I was arguing that it should be that way on all 20 acres. Today, on that day, I asked, I don't see the mathematics or the formula calculation for what that five-acre property section of the 20-acre parcel is worth. And I asked, and I've still received nothing as of this day. I met the referee. The referee could not tell me what that five acres was worth. And we're here today, and I just don't think that we could vote on a resolution until we know what the assessor assessed that five-acre piece of property for. I received something in the mail from the Diane Bodyotto assessor, and it has a picture in it. I don't know if this... Oh, I see it. It looks like it's working. This is my property right here, and it's parcel number 0100970003, and it's on the west side of 324th Street. And if I follow these red lines correctly, most of that property is code 8485. So, I look at the next piece of paper that was stapled to it, and if you look at Douglas Soil 8485, it's called Gilium Udora Silt Loams, occasionally flooded. It's 1D1 for dry, 1A1 for irrigated, and we're not irrigated, and 1G1 for grass. So, we've got to decide whether we're considered dry... Well, maybe we're considered both, dry and grass. And that looks to me like, under acres, it has a value of $4,229. And that is the only thing that I have to go by. Nobody has verified that. And I would claim that if that's so for that one, for that five-acre section of the 20 acres, then that's all that whole thing is worth. Now, I found an actual sale, and I believe that we have to work with sales within a two-year limit in Douglas County. So, if you've had an arms-length valid transaction, I found a sale two miles down the road, roughly, where the property was sold for $5,000, an acre, roughly. And so, I asked that this be considered a comparable. And then, I read the email report that I received from Mr. Dan Esch yesterday, and it said something to the effect that the referee, who never discussed this with me, says that, well, it's not the same soil type. Okay. Now, if we're going to get to whether or not we have the exact same soil type on a valid sale to determine property value, we're really splitting hairs. And we're making this argument just unbelievably high-barred. And my concern is that this is more important than ever. I've not been allowed to view the database for the community, for the Douglas County, which is a valid public record. And I'm asking that, because Michael Goodwillly has always been the one for years now who has stood in the way of viewing the database, that I'd be able to view that property records in that database and be able to find properties that are comparable to mine. Because you can see where this argument leads us today. It's just incomprehensible to me that we should pursue an argument path like this.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anything the assessor's office wants to add to this?
Mike Goodwillly, Douglas County Assessor, Register of Deeds Office. In terms of the calculation, we provided the property record file to Mr. Hannis and to you folks. The calculation is on the basically first full page when you go to the land valuation summary. We ascertain that there were 4.58 of the acres that are 1D1 land, .44 acres that are 2D land, based on the land classifications that we are obliged to use from the state of Nebraska. And the mathematics kind of work their way out across the page. The values come from themselves, come from sales of non-influenced agricultural land in counties that are more rural than ours. Because by and large, most of our ag sales have some sort of a non-agricultural influence. So, we borrow sales from Burke, Cass, Oto, Dodge, Saunders, and Washington County. We provide that information, as well as our special valuation methodology, to the state of Nebraska, and they approve our values. And so, what they approved for 2018 was for 1D1, a value per acre of $6,200, and for 2D of $5,100. The parcel that Mr. Hannis is seeking to use as comparable, he touched on it, the overlay that we get from the state of Nebraska, from the USGA, that has the land classification groupings, groups that soil in, as a different category, 2D, which is less attractive and less able to grow the highest yield that you can. And quite frankly, the state says you need to use these classification groups. I think the statutory site is 771363. So, that's where the values came from. And with that, perhaps you should hear from the referee about his recommendation.
Good morning, Commissioners. Rick Coder, 5621 NORTH 141ST. I can't use down here right now. I'm sorry. I am licensed real estate appraiser, dental certified for 26 years. I've also been, had the pleasure of serving as the supervisor of the Board of Equalization for you folks for the last long time. I was contacted about coming down here and visiting with Mr. Hannis about his property. I've got some pretty sound familiarity with it. A couple of years ago, I did that hearing myself. I know he came in again last year and had a hearing also on it, as far as seeking some relief on his valuation. We had a kind of a narrow scope this year, just that little five-acre tract we're talking about. The board had come in there, sometime in the past here, and granted him some relief on that five-acre tract. I was provided information by the assessor's office as far as the maps, determining what the classifications were of soil, as well as the charts the state provides. This type of soil is valued at this amount of money. Where they had Mr. Hannis's five-acre tract, they're right on the button as far as what the state mandates that particular soil type should be. Any deviation as far as the usage of soil types is really outside the scope of my expertise or this process, I feel. If that should be zoned or classified as something other than what it is, that's got to be done by, I've always felt, somebody besides the Board of Equalization, or probably even the county board. That is what I came up with on it. Did you find where you are?
Commissioner Boyle.
Let me ask, what... I mean, it comes down to what the valuation is by dollars. That's what it always comes down to. So, do you have a figure that it ought to be, that you believe the value of the property is per acre? Is it 60?
6,100, I think, is where they are right now. You know, I checked. I just got the standard data that the assessor makes available on their website. You can go in there and pull up quite a bit of information for free. It's available to me or the public. And there are sales out there around of ground, you know, 6,000, 7,000, 10,000, 12,000, 15,000 an acre. There are certainly people out there that would pay you $6,100 an acre for that farm, for that ground.
Okay. So, I mean, obviously, this isn't necessarily the sale price. This is what... Looking at the land, this is what the value is. You believe it's not necessarily what it would sell for, right?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Thanks.
The board?
Most denied.
Most denied by Commissioner Kraft, and a second. Is it second by Commissioner Boyle? Please vote.
Just to be clear, most to deny the protest.
Yes.
All right.
Does that include adjournment?
And adjourn.
Okay. Commissioner Boyle has joined us. He votes yes, as do the rest of the commissioners. Motion passes.
We're now called to order the Douglas County Board of Commissioners meeting. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson.
Here.
Commissioner Boyle.
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Here.
Commissioner Duda.
Here.
Commissioner Kraft.
Here.
Commissioner Morgan.
Here.
Mr. Chair.
Here. Item one is minutes and claims. Letter A is approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held December 11, 2018. Item B is approval of claims submitted for payment processed through Tuesday, December 18, 2018. And item C is approval of resolutions authorizing the clerk comptroller to make certain payments while the board is in adjournment. Signee die.
I think approval of A, B, and C.
Motion by Commissioner Duda, second by Commissioner Boyle. Please vote.
Motion passes. All commissioners voting yes.
The consent agenda. There are 12 items on the consent agenda. We need to separate out item D2, and with that is there a motion to approve items A through L with the separation and pulling out of D2.
So, move.
There's a motion by Commissioner Kraft.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote.
Motion passes. All commissioners voting yes.
Item D2 is agreement from the Nebraska Department of Health and Human Services regarding STD prevention. County attorney.
Teresa Yurk, County Attorney's Office. There's just a Scrivener's error that I was going to ask the board to correct. It is, I brought it up to Mr. Esch and also the chair. Second paragraph, second line, there's a repeat of a date there, and that's all. So, we need to just delete the words "and" August 27, 2018, and that would correct the Scrivener's error before the board votes on it.
You got that, Mr. Clerk?
Yes.
There's a motion by Commissioner Duda to move as amended, second by Commissioner Boyle. Seeing no discussion, please vote.
Motion passes. All commissioners voting yes.
Recognition and Proclamations. Letter A is a recognition of the following county employee retired. Who's retired? Barbara Glasky has retired from the Douglas County Department of Corrections after 15 years of service. Mike, are you saying anything, or are you just here? If not, no, I thought you, because you were here.
We're here for the...
No, I was talking about, I didn't know.
Good morning, Mike.
Good morning, Commissioner.
I didn't know if you planned. I thought...
Mike Myers, the Director of Corrections. Ms. Glazewski provided many years of distinguished service for us. There are many people contributing to our community today with the aid of her assistance in getting their GEDs. She will be sorely missed. We are already working on plans to succeed her, but she was a very valuable asset to the Department of Corrections in our community.
Okay. With that, is there a motion and a second to approve item A? There's a motion by Commissioner Duda, second by Commissioner Kavanaugh. Please vote.
Motion passes. All commissioners voting yes.
Item B is a certificate presentation to the winners of the Douglas County 2018 Food Challenge. Commissioner Borgeson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'm happy to announce the winners. The community is the winner as a whole from the generous food collection that our departments did. But we make it a little competitive, and for the second year in a row, or third year in a row, 911 has come in in first place. And we thank you for everything that you've done. And we have Nicole Dieterman here, who will get this certificate. But second, our office came in second. And third was Extension. And I don't know if anybody is here from Extension or not. But again, I just want to thank 911 and all the employees across the county that participated in this. This time of year, there are a lot of families in need of food and clothing and Christmas presents and just all-around need for their families. And you guys really stepped it up again, and we really appreciate it. The food went to two places. It went to a project we care, and it went to NCAP. So, we appreciate again all the work that you do for this event. And we do have certificates that we will submit. But since you're here, Nicole, why don't you come up and get your certificate for 911? And David, you can come too. Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. Thanks, David.
Coke.
Just go down the line.
You gotta go to wine. Nice job.
Congratulations.
Very good.
Thanks for picking us up. Oh, yeah. Yeah, we had fun.
David.
I thought Daryl, I thought Daryl was going to be here from our office, but we'll go ahead and...
I think he's eating.
And then Extension will get theirs to them. But again, thank you to all the county...
It's not a resolution.
It's not. It's just a recognition.
Oh, okay, fine.
But thank you again for everyone who participated in the food drive again this year.
Thank you all. Item four is citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on Board of Commissioners items not officially listed on the agenda. Are there any citizens' comments at this time?
Good morning. Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska. Today's the last day for this year, so I'd like to play a little bit of Elmer Fudd, and I'd like you to play along with me for my five minutes, plus any time that I do get interrupted. I want to shoot some holes in your consent agenda thing here, in hopes of changing some ideas for next year. If you read along with me on this statement, you might have to go get one off the board over there and read it. I'm not sure how often you read this. But as I read it again, I wonder why in the hell would I bother coming down here? Because this kind of tells me that I'm not coming down here to be able to debate anything, because there will be no debate. I can comment on a lot of things, and I can make up a list of lots of items that relate to county government. And there's an awful lot that wouldn't necessarily be restricted to a notebook. But read, let's participate in a debate that class that's not a debate, but it's about how not to debate. Citizens' comments. This is an opportunity? I don't know that I look at that as an opportunity. For members of the audience, there aren't very many here, to be heard for five minutes or less, unless you want to ask questions, maximum of five minutes, on any topic that is not, be clear about that, not on the agenda. Why would I want to come down here if I can't talk or ask about the items on the agenda? Why would I even bother driving down here to look at it or get a copy of it? It makes no sense. Not to me, anyway. And I don't think a lot of average citizens would disagree with that. As a result, okay. But under the Open Meetings Act, oh, yeah, it's all posted around here, and you can look it up on the internet, so that the public will know which items are under consideration. Well, why would I care if I can't comment about it? And quite frankly, I don't know that this really tells me a whole lot about what is on the agenda. I'm not a lawyer. As a result, the board will not debate or take action, hmm, that's interesting, on any item presented during citizen comments. So, why would I bring anything up? Does that mean never, never, never? Would you do that? Or does that mean that I can request you put this on the agenda for next week, and then we can debate it? I don't know. I didn't do debate class in high school. But I do think Mr. Boyle brought this up a couple of weeks ago about, well, something about, gee, I understand we cannot discourse with the citizens at the microphone. You need to change that. And I agree with him. I think maybe he was talking about this type of thing. I think you need to change that for next year. It's early in the morning. Not all citizens can come down here. And you don't have email sessions. You don't read emails. So, how do they get their word across? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move on to item seven, which is committee discussion. Letter, item A is finance. Item one is the budget report. Commissioners Morgan and Boyle.
Budget is presented. And Commissioner Boyle and I do have a meeting after this board meeting with finance to kind of talk about some things, and then we'll have all of the board involved in that in the near future.
Right, in 903.
And we also have, I think, a committee meeting today, human resources, but we'll talk about that, the chairperson will later. And then the other item is a resolution to direct Douglas County Attorney's Office, Douglas County Public Property Director, to formally offer to purchase MUD real estate and complete a purchase agreement, lease agreement on behalf of Douglas County for $6 million. Teresa Yurk, do you want to... I don't know that there's a need for you to comment, but if you wanted to comment, that'd be fine.
Let me, so let me do this, PJ. Since this was discussed last week, we're going to have action today. I'd like for a motion, a second, then we can go to Teresa.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Borgeson, second by Commissioner Boyle. Teresa, anything you want to add?
I do not. You covered it. Thank you, Commissioner.
There is a motion, second, Commissioner Kavanaugh.
I just have some questions on this relative to the purchase process and its ramifications. We had a first public hearing on this, I guess, a week ago, and now we're moving directly to action. So, I want to get in the record some of the background on this, because it's relatively new to the public relative to the purchase and the price. My understanding, and I don't know, PJ, if this is appropriate for your response or for the county attorneys, but I'll direct it to you, and you can send it to whoever, is that there has been no appraisal done for this purchase of this property. Is that right?
No, that's incorrect.
Oh, there has been appraisal done for this purchase of this property? I haven't seen it. Is it available?
Well, Jerry Lay happens to be here. We worked on this property for probably some months, probably close to, what, nine months ago, I'm going to say? And that was our, as we looked at options, that was one of the options and one of the ones that we thought was very viable. And we were not able to put that together at that time. Scott Keep was CEO there, about to depart, I think, in April, and we... And we probably were talking about it in March, February, and then it didn't materialize. And there wasn't appraisal done. And I want to say for approximately half of that property at that time, and it was roughly around $3 million, as I recall, was the appraisal.
Okay, I'm sorry. I asked, was there an appraisal done of this property for this purchase? And maybe, maybe that wasn't clear. My understanding, and I've read the appraisal that was done for the offer that was made some time ago, was that that appraisal did not involve the building, the MUD headquarters building on that block. And I've read this appraisal cover to cover. And it recommended, I think, for everything but the building, about a $4 million appraisal value. Is that, is that correct?
Correct.
So there's no appraisal on this purchase, correct? That's what my question is. Is there appraisal on this purchase that includes the building?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Jerry, wasn't there an appraisal also on that whole square block?
Yes, for the record, Jerry Laye, Public Property. Yeah, the appraisal was for land only, three-fourths of that entire block. Did not include buildings. So that's been clear, I think, from, you know, back in the, in the winter when we had discussions and things broke off in a friendly situation. And they were energized again here recently. So obviously, we had a good base for a value of that particular block, obviously attractive to the project for Justice Center, Youth Center, directly across and south from the courthouse. So in my opinion, as I may have stated before to some of you individually, if you look at some of the values of buildings of that magnitude and that historic look, if you will, kind of a match to the courthouse, which is our 106-year-old building now. So to be able to purchase the land and the buildings and to retain the historic preservation of that MUD building and use it for our Justice Center, I think, is in our favor, in my opinion.
I appreciate that. The answer to my question, and thanks for all the other information that I didn't ask for, but is that for this purchase of the entire block and all of the buildings on it, there is no appraisal. The previous appraisal specifically excluded the buildings that we're talking about, particularly the headquarters building of MUD. It specifically, did not include that.
There is no other appraisal, other than last year's.
Yeah, and that's a $4 million appraisal that does not include the MUD headquarters. And now we're making a $6 million offer. That's all I'm trying to get to here.
Right.
Right. So there is no appraisal for this purchase. The property that we have purchased for this project, the Justice Center project, the OHA project, the OHA property, which I believe we spent $2.75 million on, is there an alternate use for that property? Because we own it now and we bought it for this project. And now, my understanding is, we're changing direction and going for another property for this project. So for the building that we've already paid for, is there, is there a use for that?
Well, let me say, I have ideas that I've kind of kicked around within our department between Jeff McGill and Dave Peterson. And I think, I think I have some uses for that space. But we're quite a ways out from that because of the remodel of the library that's not completed yet for OHA. But I don't want to spoil anybody's holiday season, but I do have some ideas for that space that need to be discussed at a later date.
Okay. And I'm planning on holding an Administrative Services Committee as soon as the New Year dawns and I'll put that on the agenda because I'd really like to know what we're gonna do with the property that we already paid for, for this project that we're now gonna redirect. The eminent domain litigation that we are engaged in relative to the so-called Perrin Building, relative to this own same project that we're now redirecting to MUD, do we have an idea of what we're gonna do with that eminent domain litigation?
Hold on, can we talk about that?
Teresa Yurk, County Attorney's Office. I'll be happy to give you a litigation update in executive session, but I will not discuss strategy with the Board in this open meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we have initiated eminent domain to take some private property for a project that it now appears we're abandoning. And so that would eliminate the need for the public taking of this private property relative to this eminent domain lawsuit, which is currently continued at the county's motion for some period of time. And we can't even discuss whether or not we're going to still take private property by eminent domain for a project that now is going elsewhere. You know, that's, that's how we're doing business around here. I think it's really suspect to have, have this appear to be a public hearing when we're not talking about anything to do with this in public. Finally, how do we pay for this? If we, if we're offering them $6 million, the Finance Committee is in charge of our budget. I'd be interested to know how we pay for this, $6 million, because we've already purchased a building for $2.75 and we're involved in litigation to take another building for a million dollars or so. What's, what's the payment plan for this particular version of the scheme? Is there anybody on the Finance Committee that can respond to that?
Joe, do you want to respond?
Yeah, yeah, we could. The plan is that this purchase of property would be paid out of the $120 million of bond proceeds.
Which bond is that?
The bond that the Public Building Commission's gonna issue.
They have not issued a bond.
Not yet.
Okay.
We don't have an address yet. It's hard to issue bonds without an address.
So that's not a bond issue under the Douglas County Board's control. The Douglas County Board is making a proposal to purchase for $6 million a piece of property from the Metropolitan Utilities District. So are you telling me that the purchase offer that we're making is contingent upon the Building Commission's approval of a bond that is yet to be floated? Is that right? Do I have that right?
Yes.
Okay. Well, that's pretty sketchy for a finance of a real estate purchase by an entity that we don't control to underpin an offer that we're making to another entity, independent governmental entity that we don't control. You know, this is the latest version of what has been seat-of-the-pants operation for a year now, much of it conducted behind closed doors. And it's obviously not ready for prime time. None of these discussions have been had. That's the entirety of the discussion of a $6 million proposal. You just heard it. It took about two minutes and it wouldn't have come up if we hadn't asked these questions. So I think the appropriate thing to do with this, because there is no rush, MUD certainly in no hurry, is to lay this over for public hearing and Finance input from the Building Commission, who doesn't have a representative here, I don't believe. Although Commissioners Boyle and due to serve on that commission, I don't know that the Building Commission has ever entertained the $6 million MUD purchase price as a portion of a bond issue. Have they? I don't think they have.
Yes, they have.
Oh, when?
When we took the action to put the bonds into our budget at a public meeting, public vote. You know all this, Jim. You're, you're just intentionally trying to confuse the issue.
I follow the agenda of the Building Commission. There's been no discussion of a purchase of MUD by the Douglas County Board on any agenda item that appeared on their public agenda. Did you discuss this in the last Building Commission?
We have discussed at length the building of the Juvenile Justice Center, the creation of the nonprofit. The location is up to the county, as you well know. What is very frustrating, and I'll be brief, I recognize you have the floor here, but, but when Jim Thompson was here last week from the NRD, and I have not agreed that much historically with Jim, but he listened to this debate and got up and said, "What in the world are you guys doing? You got a willing buyer, a willing seller, just do it."
Okay, that's not exactly on the point of we don't have a $6 million offer from Douglas County to the Metropolitan Utilities District from this property, for this property, apparently. And, you know, I think until that's clear, MUD might have some severe reservations about entertaining a property sale to an entity that's not even going to finance itself without authorization from the appropriate entity, the Building Commission, to do so. So I'd move that we lay this matter over until it's actually been discussed and worked out, rather than just throw, again, another seat-of-the-pants proposal at MUD with a good chance that they would react as they did to the last one, which is wisely to turn it down.
That, that's a motion and you're seconding the layover?
Yes, I am. I, I don't think there's, you know, let me make it very clear. I, I'm planning on voting for the purchase of that, that area, that lot and the building, the whole thing. I think it's the most desirable site. It's one that Commissioner Borges and I talked about a long time ago when I got on the Building Commission. And it makes the greatest sense. It crosses right over from the courthouse. And so in, in light of that, what I have done is, but it's probably premature. I think, I know that Mr. Kavanaugh does ask some bothersome questions and I'm, and frankly, some of them, I think, have merit. Also, as Chair of the committee that he's on, he has jurisdiction over, he can call these meetings to discuss these things, which he has done, much to the annoyance of a majority of the Board. But discussion on this won't kill us. What I have done, and this is, I really, maybe it's not appropriate to do, but if we ever get to voting on this resolution, what I have done is remove the sections that refer, because, refers to the Juvenile Justice Center. And the reason I've done that is, and I want Commissioner Duda and Borges to be, that's okay.
No, we're paying attention.
I know you are, I know you are. But I just want to make it clear, what I want, the point I'm trying to make is, we have some, we agree, all of us agree on part of this resolution to, not totally, but we agree on, I think a majority agrees, on purchasing this property for a courthouse. The rub comes in where there's still discussion about the Juvenile Justice Center. So I have prepared an amendment to the resolution with the help of...
Well, you gotta, you gotta hand the layover first.
Pardon me, well, I know that. But I guess, I would like to see it laid over and consider the alternative, which is not to bring in the Juvenile Justice Center. Let's get the courthouse going. And if we can agree on the Juvenile Justice Center, there'll be time and plenty of time to bring it in. I personally still don't, I have reservations, but I think we can accomplish that. But I, I do think that, you know, if, if there has not been an appraisal, which I understood that there was, it goes back and forth. But can we produce it? Can we show it to, in executive session? Can we show it to the members of the Board? That'd be helpful. So I, I don't think the questions that Mr. Kavanaugh are raising are out of order. I think they're, many of them are well-placed and I think we should have some answers and I think we need to, I don't see a problem with laying this over. I, I don't know what, what, what we lose. And MUD is asking questions, too. I know Ms. Howard asked questions over there, too, that were quite pertinent. So I think we need to make sure that we cover all these bases with ourselves and with MUD and with the public, and then we can vote with a clear conscience. So that's why I seconded the layover.
There is, there's a motion to lay it over?
Can I clarify that, Mr. Chair?
Okay.
So that we have a date certain for this layover so that we know what we're doing in an organized fashion. I propose that we lay it over until our next regularly scheduled County Board meeting on January 8th. I have scheduled an Administrative Services Committee meeting to discuss this and other matters on January 7th, which will allow us additional public discussion of this. I'm intending to invite participation by all the interested parties in this. At that time, as we've done with bond issues in the past, it's important to have these discussions in open and public. So I would amend this resolution or this proposed layover to January 8th, 2019, at our regularly scheduled Douglas County Board meeting.
And I'll agree to that.
Seeing no, Commissioner Duda?
Speaking to the layover motion, when I did attend the last MUD Board meeting, they asked if it was possible that the County Board solidify its offer so that they know exactly what they are responding to. And they said their next Board meeting was on January 2nd. And I responded that we had opportunity to both have public discussion on this a week before we voted on it and then to take a public vote on it in ample time before their Board meeting so that they know what they are responding to. That was their request and I intend to try to comply with it.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
I've had direct discussions with MUD Board members, as I think Commissioner Boyle has, maybe others have as well. And they have made it very clear to me that they were not requesting an offer from us for their January 2nd meeting. They were simply informing us that's their next meeting. They are in absolutely no rush to entertain our offer. And there is no need to have it before them on January 2nd. As a matter of fact, I think it will hurt our chances, even if we were serious about going forward with this, not to have these financial, important financial considerations at least discussed and clarified and perhaps endorsed by the Public Building Commission before we go off and make representations, as we do in the proposed resolution, that we're offering $6 million, when in fact, we're not offering $6 million. I mean, we're not offering $6 million of our money authorized by us. So they're not saying that we have to have an offer to them by January 7th.
Chris? Commissioner Boar?
Well, I'll just add my comments to that, too. And I think something that Commissioner Duda said is really, there's a phrase that he used that probably is, is kind of jarring, and that's the phrase, "If possible." And I don't think the MUD Board is trying to rush this to the point where we must have an answer by that date. I mean, I may be wrong, but if possible, you know. I think they understand, they're a board, they understand how things have to move and the government moves awfully slow, awfully slowly at times. And so I just don't see a problem with laying this over until the 8th. That's just six days after. I think it makes sense. I'd like to have some, something in writing, I'd like to see something.
There's a motion, second, to layover. Please vote.
Commissioner Morgan?
Voting no.
Okay.
The life won't go on.
Sure. Motion fails. Commissioners Boyle and Kavanaugh voting yes. All other commissioners voting no.
There's a current motion on the floor to approve the agreement. Wait a minute, Commissioner Boar?
Commissioner Chair, yes. I have an amendment that's been passed out.
Okay.
And it's real straightforward. And we have been really disagreeing more in the last few months. It's turned this, in my estimation, this fun board where I can duel with Commissioner Duda openly, to, to really kind of a, almost in a very uncomfortable place where we are. I'm trying to find some common ground and I hope that I've found it, maybe. And that is, the substitute resolution that I have takes out the bone of contention. And that is, we, it calls for the purchase of the property for the $6 million and it's totally complete, except that it takes out a... and it's totally complete, except that it takes out a sentence that calls for the Juvenile Justice Center being built at the courthouse. And some commissioners I know are not totally convinced it belongs there. There are questions, although I'm feeling much more comfortable about it, there are still questions that remain that need to be resolved. So please take this at face value. I'm not throwing a javelin and anybody expecting them to be the javelin exector. What I'm trying to do is to find common ground. We agree that a courthouse must be built. That's what this substitute resolution says. Let's move forward and plan the courthouse, and then we can get down to what we do about the Juvenile Justice Center. Frankly, there is certainly a majority that plans, wants to see it there, but this is a clean, clean start, I think, and so I would offer this amendment that takes out the references to the Juvenile Justice Center.
That's a motion by Commissioner Boyle. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second by Commissioner Duda? Commissioner Borges?
Well, you talk about transparency and accountability, and taking that out, again, there's been three votes on this board to do what we're doing and co-locate on a property. And so to take that out, I think we would be deceiving the public on what we really want to do with the property. And again, the Board has spoken in terms of how they want to move forward, and I think the resolution, as it is written for this Board, I think that needs to stay in there.
Commissioner Duda?
If I may. I was hoping your jaw would drop a little more when I seconded your motion, Commissioner Boyle.
Thanks.
There are things that we do all agree on, and there are things that have not, we have not come to consensus yet on, and probably never will. I mean, I recognize that. And just laying things over for the sake of laying things over, I can see that just going on indefinitely from contrarians that don't ever want us to move forward, and so I'm not comfortable with that. But all we're trying to do here is buy this property. The world knows what we're trying to buy it for, that we need to expand our courthouse, and quite likely, we'll have a Juvenile Attention Center as a part of the project. But at this point, what we know is, we need that property. That's our first choice. Now, I also find it kind of ironic to me, if you're against taking the eminent domain step on Perrin's building, then absolutely, you should be supporting this. If you say we need to expand the courthouse, and all seven of us have said that, that we need to expand the courthouse, we need more space. And so at this point, the next question is, where? And this is the best site. We do have a willing buyer, a willing seller. I think it's exciting. And sure, we have to keep the eminent domain on hold until we find out how this works out. You know, we're dealing with another public board, and we already know we have commissioners actively talking to the M U D Board members about what they're doing. And so I take nothing for granted. I do not assume that M U D will approve this. But I don't think we need to get into the details of what is going to be where on this property. At this point, we need the land. That's our number-one site, our number-one choice. So I'm following Jim Thompson's advice. Just do it. Willing buyer, willing seller, just do it. So, fine, I'm good with what you are proposing.
Commissioner Morgan?
Commissioner Duda, what you said about the eminent domain is so on track, because there is not a way that you could take down our I T building that we've owned for many years, we've been told that by engineers, and take the Omaha Housing Authority building and build that tower without damaging Mr. Perrin's building. They're connected. It wouldn't happen. It'd be like what happened to Frank Payne's property by the Holland Center. So this alternative, that was our first priority as we looked at all the properties around Douglas County, becomes the right thing to do. Jerry Leahy, who I depend on greatly in his service to the county for more than 30 years, you know, knows that we're on the right track, and I appreciate your comments, Jerry. And I believe that appraisal showed, without that building, over $3 million, the appraisal. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Now, we're including a 50,000-foot building also on that property that is far superior to most buildings in the downtown area that we are going to preserve for 50 years, and that's going to be a covenant. And I, for one, and I think that for sure the majority of this Board, as Mary Ann said, has voted on these things three times, are very thankful that the M U D Board is considering possibly this proposal. And we have people here that will work to have the M U D Board not do that, and then we have no alternative, even if we build just the tower without the youth center, to not continue along the path of eminent domain. So all of us have tried to find an alternative that works in a positive way. And the last thing I want to say is, I hope it's the last thing for the public's sake, the most important thing here is to do the right thing for the county attorney's offices, the public defender, probation, et cetera. And most important, the number-one priority, is for the youth. It's not about us. It's to listen to the judges, look at these other cities, and know that having it all together is the right thing to do. Period.
Commissioner Craft?
I'm going to support Mike's motion, because it really doesn't change anything as far as the purchase. And I was talking to Joe Lorenz about the what-ifs. Okay? As far as the $6 million for the purchase, Joe, would you answer that what-if?
Well, the way the proposal's written is that the closing would be scheduled for April 15th, which we had a meeting with the bond counsel from Baird Home with the Public Building Commission this week, and talked about the financing. And, you know, where we think there's a high probability that the bond can be placed and the proceeds available by that date, in the event that there was a delay, at that time, we could always raise the $6 million from the county reserves and bridge it until the bond were closed, if that unlikely event were to occur. We do have a contingency to fund it, so I am confident that we will have the $6 million.
Thank you, because I, too, am confident. This project is so important, so vitally important. Willing buyer, willing seller. You know, people tell us we should operate like a business. When a business has an opportunity like this, they strike. When the opportunity presents itself, as a businessman, I would strike. If I delayed, I would lose a bid. If I delayed, something else would interfere. I don't want to see us delay.
Commissioner Boyle?
The, excuse me. What I'm hearing, you know, again, we agree on completely the need for this courthouse for the efficient operation of our justice system. The latest plan that I have seen on this complex with the M U D site has, it's a separate building for the juvenile justice. It doesn't appear to be attached. It also has a dedicated parking garage, which is separate. It is not impossible to do what we're doing this morning, and considering this morning, and that is, saying yes to this courthouse, which we really need, and then continuing to talk about the problem, the one that we have, the disagreement on it, isolates it. And I think that, I think it makes sense to do that. And I couldn't agree more that the issue really is on the children. We need to continue to think about that. And so I just, I think this makes sense. Mr. Kavanaugh is going to have a hearing on the 7th, and if this is passed, we've got the courthouse, they can, it's a separate building. They can continue, they could actually buy the lot. We can start construction on the courthouse building, and then if and when we decide the juvenile justice goes next door, do that. This gives us a chance to get this courthouse moving. So that's why I really feel like we need to pass this. I have no problem with continuing to discuss the juvenile justice, and I know that many of you have given a lot of time in looking at this, and I'm not saying you're wrong, and I'm certainly not saying I'm right. But we need to, I think we need more time. So let's build the courthouse, and then the juvenile center is separate, and the garage that accommodates it is separate, and we can get it done that way. So I hope that you'll please, please, consider voting for this, so that we can get moving on that courthouse.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
I'm going to say again, I support building the courthouse. I've always supported building the courthouse annex. I think there's broad agreement on that. I think that Commissioner Boyle points out an important point that we should agree on, what we can agree on. And I have supported, from the beginning, the annex to the courthouse to house our expanding juvenile court, its offices and probation, public defender, and the county attorney. What we're going to end up with, at the end of the day here, is property at the O H A Center. No intended use, other than, maybe we'll hear from Mr. Leahy at the committee hearing on his ideas there. Property at the M U D headquarters, which is going to be, I think M U D is requesting that we retain that in its current shape. And then whatever new construction property as well, which offers us opportunities to do exactly what we've been talking about in terms of relocating the juvenile courts and their probation and other administrative offices, and relocating the county attorney and the public defender all in one space. I support that. We all support that. So in order to move this process forward, I would vote for this amended resolution. But the discussion's going to continue, because as we've talked about this today, it's become clear that there's no clear financing. I don't know what our reserve is, and maybe Mr. Lorenz can inform us what currently the balance of our reserve is. Mr. Lorenz?
Yes, there, at the April 15th closing date, comes at a high point for the county when the March 30th proceeds are in, and at that point, our reserves usually run in excess of $30 million. There's some money that we could potentially use out of the inheritance tax fund. And I think this relates to the discussion we always have about why the county maintains a AAA bond rating, which really enables us the financial flexibility where occasions like this would arise, that we do have sufficient liquidity to fund a purchase like this.
All right. Well, just to be clear, though, you're not talking about the county's AAA bond rating authority when you talk about your April 15th proposed bond issue. You're talking about the Building Commission's AA bonding authority. Is that correct?
Well, the 120 million bond would be the Building Commission. If we have to bridge it, in the event that the bond isn't in place, that's why I said I'm confident there's sufficient liquidity at the county to fund that $6 million.
Okay. So what you're saying is that the bonding authority of the Building Commission, which we do not control, may or may not come in, and you're anticipating in conversations with the private corporations, Bonding Council, an April 15th bond issue, which we do not control, that we would pay for it out of our reserves and the inheritance tax fund, which I believe we used to purchase the O H A building. Is that right?
Which one are you asking? Is that right?
Well, we would purchase it out of our reserves and the inheritance tax fund, which we used to purchase the O H A building. Is that right?
We could do that. That would be a fallback. The preferable that we've discussed with the Building Commission and Bond Counsel is to fund it from the $120 million bond issue.
Got you, but the Building Commission has not passed on that, correct?
Well, they authorized the $120 million bond issues, and if this falls within that, I'm not, I defer to one of the Building Commission members and see if they feel comfortable. I'm not in a position to offer that opinion.
I appreciate that, Mr. Lorenz. It's not your job, because it's not your bonding authority. What is our inheritance tax balance?
$10 million.
Sorry?
$10 million.
$10 million. Thank you.
If I may, just to respond to saying that the county has no control over the Building Commission's bonding, that's not true. A Building Commission is powerless without the full backing. I call it cosigning a note with your, like, you know, when a kid gets a car, the notes have to cosign the loan. The Building Commission, I mean, we only have statutory limit of 1.7 cents. There's no way in the world that we have deep enough pockets to take on something of this magnitude without the full backing of the city council and the county board. And at that point, we take the city's bond rating, AA plus. That's how it works. But the county board and the city council both have to sign off on any bonds that the Building Commission ever issues. We have no authority without the full backing of the city and the county.
Commissioner Morgan?
So Commissioner Boyle, I know you mentioned a couple of things to me as the discussion was going on. I think what you're saying, if I'm correct, I believe there's certainly five of us that are pretty strongly feeling it's the right thing to do by M U D, and I think you might feel the same way as I do on that. And hopefully, M U D's Board will look at us being together in their important contribution to downtown and the future of this county and making, hopefully, a positive decision so that we wouldn't have to go through eminent domain, even if we're just building for the county attorney, the courts, and so on, unless somebody comes up with the magical site where Woodman is or something else. So what you're wanting to do with this resolution is basically have more discussion concerning the youth center in the weeks, months ahead.
We're going to have that regardless of what, how we vote. If we vote on the original resolution, there will be discussion further. Mr. Kavanaugh is the Chair of that committee, and he intends to discuss this further. He's already got a date set. If we vote on this today, my amended resolution, what it says is, we agree on the need to build the courthouse. I think it sends a very positive signal, if this is what we end up with, a positive signal to the city council, which has to vote on it. Many of us have talked to the mayor, many of us have talked to council members. I think what this does is give us a rare opportunity to find common ground with just about everybody involved, and it locks in that site, which is so critical to what we need. It is directly across the street, is the cleanest, nicest additional space that we could possibly come up with. And so what I say is that let's talk about the courthouse. We all support it. That's why I say, let's pass a resolution to buy this property and move forward with the courthouse annex. And the reason I say that is, as I said, the latest plans I saw, regardless of how this comes out, is that the juvenile justice part of it is a separate building, and it has its own garage. So, I mean, it's a separate deal. So then we can get down and argue about that. You know, not that I intend to argue much more about that, but I just see this as a clean path to get this thing going, get the property under our control, get the architects and engineers doing the courthouse, because we don't, whatever way it goes, the courthouse is a standalone building.
Yeah. Discussion, you know, is my idea, always helpful, and I like that, and I think we have a responsibility to do that.
Right.
The thing that could be costly is if we started to work on the courthouse, and I may yield to Mary Ann because of her previous votes, you know, at some point, you want to start to build in the security how you're transporting the youth over to the courts, if it is going to be adjourned, and so on. So I don't see the harm in your resolution, and resolutions are just resolutions. They're not statutes or anything else. And I might yield, if Mary Ann wants to say anything about previous votes, but to have more discussion, I'm good with that. That's always good. But I think what we have before us is a vote to get this done today. And I'm happy, if it is a six-to-one vote, to move ahead to let M U D know of our appreciation for their consideration.
Thank you. I think this makes great sense. I think this makes great sense.
Commissioner Borges.
Well, again, I'll reiterate that there were three votes taken by this board to move forward with the way in which we voted to move forward, and that was co-locate both the courthouse and the juvenile center. Taking this language out, and you kind of just said it, Commissioner Boyle, if you leave it in or you take it out, it doesn't matter. So leave it in because then we are truly continuing on the path that we've told the public we are continuing on. And maybe, well, I won't say that. Just leave it in there because I think we, again, because of the criticism we've gotten for not being open and transparent and telling the public exactly what we're doing, taking that out is not being transparent or truthful to the public on what our plans are for the project. And so that's why I think it's important to leave it in the resolution for the vote.
Let me ask you a question, Mary Ann. Commissioner Borges and...
Having his resolution passed doesn't mean that we're saying we're against having it together. What he's saying is more discussion. Are you answer?
Commissioner Morgan, you're absolutely right. And I understand exactly what you're saying, Commissioner Borges, but it does not say we're not building it there. What it says is let's get going with that courthouse. And, you know, there's a walkway over to the juvenile justice section. This does not say we're not building it there. We're not breaking faith with the public. We're not doing anything like that. But what this does is it gets us moving on the courthouse, gets us control of that lot, which we really need. I don't want to dally on it. Let's get this done and get it started. And, you know, if the juvenile justice center is built there, which I'll be very candid, I think it's going to be. But let's do this courthouse and get it going. And the other thing is that if this passes, anyone who votes for it can bring it back, or you can bring back other amendments and say, and get right back to this. I mean, this is not set in concrete, but this does give us an opportunity to move ahead with the courthouse. That's what I want to do.
My hope would be if we do have that discussion and this passes, that we really work diligently to get this matter resolved. And hopefully, it can be within the 30, 45 days of the new year. And maybe I'm not...
Mr. Chair, may I call a question unless there's others who wish to speak?
Yeah, I got one comment, and then we can go to it. You know, I understand the sentiment, but let me say, if changing it does nothing, then I think you should leave it the same for the simple reason that I think it sends conflicting arguments. That's not good because the having, even implying that we're thinking about this is like having a cell phone and just playing games on it. Having a cell phone and not turning on the Wi-Fi. Having a cell phone and not having cell coverage in it. You can't separate the juvenile justice system from this building because, one, having a separate building is putting the families in the same situation they are now. The whole thing is for the family. And physically, it's bad because you still have to observe, have the cost of the transportation and other things that are in it. So I would urge my colleagues, as we get ready to go on this, don't imply that there's separation in it because there's not. We have our views on it, but I soundly believe co-location is what's going on across the country. It's best and it's proven. So...
Mr. Chair. Well, I don't disagree with you, but I do take offense to you talking about cell phones when you're talking to me.
I was trying to confuse you on purpose.
I didn't understand what you said about cell phones.
And I was trying to confuse you on purpose.
There at something.
Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One other point, this has turned, as Commissioner Boyle pointed out at the beginning of the meeting, our fun times here aren't so fun these days. There's a lot of acrimony and animosity. Well, on purpose or not, it's there. And it's spilling over to everybody we touch. We're spilling it over. We're taking it to them. MUD doesn't want to be in the middle of that controversy. They don't want to make the decision, should there be a juvenile detention center built here or not? That's not their call. It shouldn't be their call. It's our call, in cooperation with building commission and the city if we go that route. But it's our call, not theirs. What they need to know is what are we willing to pay for the building? Period. And this tells them that.
Mr. Chair, may I call a question? Yes.
Chair Rogers, may I make a comment? Thank you very much. Truce York County Attorney's Office. I just had a question with regards to the last paragraph of the proposed amended resolution. It's worded a little differently than the original. I apologize, I don't have the amended in front of me, but I believe what it says is that it authorizes the county attorney and the director of public properties to negotiate the lease, and then the lease is to be signed by the chair or vice chair. And I just want to clarify for the record that that means that they could execute that, the chair and vice chair could execute that, subject to county attorney approval, without bringing it back to the board.
Okay, well, that's not what we intended, Patrick. But I...
But that would allow, and that is consistent with other resolutions, that it would allow for the, what basically the resolution is doing is authorizing the chair or the vice chair to sign whatever document, you know, there it says the lease. And that implies to me, and implies because we've done this in the past, that it doesn't have to come back before the board.
And that's what I, go ahead.
Yeah, I think the intention of that was, on all previous that I can recall, with these kind of things, it's the chair or the vice chair that signs it, not some random staff member.
And, no, and I took it to mean that, but I thought I would just seek that clarification. It's just worded a little differently than the original, and so thank you for that clarification. Thank you.
Okay. With that, we do have a motion, a second, to amend the original motion. You ready, Mr. Clerk? Please vote.
We're voting on the...
The amendment.
Mike's resolution.
Motion passes. Commissioners Rogers and Borges voting no, other commissioners voting yes.
That's already on the floor. So, ready, Mr. Clerk?
Okay.
We're voting on the purchase.
Motion passes. Commissioner Borges voting no, other commissioners voting yes.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I want to thank everyone, including Commissioners Borges and Rogers, who did not support this. This puts us on a path to getting this thing done, and now we can, I think, the county attorney, public defender, and the rest. This is a good move. And MUD knows we want the deal. I mean, I just, it's made sense. Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you. On the administrative services committee front, as I indicated, a committee hearing will be held on Monday, January 2nd at 2:00 p.m. I believe it's on the ninth floor regarding some space needs for the county treasurer and their strategic plan for that, an update on the public safety bond, and an update on the juvenile justice center. And hopefully, this MUD portion of this will be discussed there as well. That's January 7th, Monday at 2:00 p.m.
With that, we'll go to human resources. Item one is the weekly personnel report, and that is as submitted. Item two, there are no legislative items to discuss, but item three, a resolution approving Douglas County's preliminary 2019 legislative priorities. Commissioner Borges.
So do you have those priorities, Michael? So we've had several meetings on this and with the tri-county retreat, and so do you want to just run through them?
Sure. I'm having an issue with my microphone.
Oh.
Sorry.
Well, that's okay. I'll, let me open up my book here. So we had the, that's okay. We had the meetings, again, with our HR legislative committee, and then we also had some conversations with the tri, at the tri-county retreat on things that we could support as the three largest counties. So the two bills that we are requesting for introduction is support the criminal justice reform address, raising jail cost and legislation to mitigate the fiscal impact of county jails as a result of the LB 605. And then the second one is to support the elimination of a civil service commission, and it states the statutes, and then to eliminate the requirement that any county having a population over 400,000 have a civil service and replace the civil service structure similar to that of Lancaster and Sarpy. And then we have standing support items. One, support the elimination of unfunded, underfunded mandates of the county by the state. That's been an ongoing one. And again, those examples are where the state mandates us to pay for space, office space for health and human services and court or just state offices in general. We also have support counties to share proportionately in the automotive sales tax revenue collected by county treasurers, and then support the legislative initiative to revise the revenue and taxation sections. It has to do with Green Belt. And then revise the statute to allow qualified mental health professionals the ability to initiate emergency protective custody. Again, this is opening it up a little bit of who would be able to initiate the EPC, but yet not opening it up to everybody and their brother. It's a very select group of mental health professionals that would be able to initiate the EPC. And then the last one is to support the transport across state lines of mentally ill individuals held under that emergency protective custody in order to deliver or return that individual to their home county of residence. So as we go forward through the legislative session, there are things that will be brought to this board as always, but this is kind of our agenda package this year as we move forward, and I would ask for a motion to approve.
There's a motion by Commissioner Borges, a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Duda. Commissioner Boyle.
Yes, I'd like to ask if, it's been brought up several times, but we haven't quite gotten on point, and I think probably because we don't have enough information, but the distribution, excuse me, of the 911 funds that we are taxed on, all the cell phones and landlines, is a...
See, we're just having things, cell phones and landlines. Go two different directions with the fees. So you need to clarify which one.
Okay, well, I'm just, I guess, I misspoke. I guess what I'm after are the telephone fees. But what it is, is there's an archaic formula that is weighted to favor other parts of the state and not Lancaster, Sarpy, or Douglas. And so efforts, for example, to raise our 50 cent fee to a dollar, all that means is that Ong, Nebraska is going to get more money, not us. And I don't, I'm not, we're in this together, there's no question about it, but the formula now clearly favors and hurts, favors the urban, or the rural area, and hurts the urban. So we need to get a formula change, and I think it's in state law. We need to focus on that, take a look at it, and maybe report back and see if it's something we want to pursue. I think we ought to. So I just bring that up, and I do appreciate, these are really good proposals, and I support them all. Thank you, Commissioner Borges.
Commissioner Duda.
Thank you. I too support the package. There's a lot of good stuff in there. Good luck on getting civil service eliminated, but it makes, I mean, it's worth the effort to get there. I just want to clarify on the 911 landline charges, that's the 50 cents to a dollar that we've never been, everybody else, those stay local, those stay within the county. It is the cell phones, because you don't know exactly where a cell phone is. Those are the ones that go to the state, and the public service commission then divvies them out as they see fit. So I think those are the ones that are really at issue. The landline fees do stay here and go to our 911, but it's the cell phone fees that we lose most of.
And I have to say, I'm very embarrassed that you know more about this than I do. Thanks.
See, no further questions. There's a motion, a second. Please vote.
Motion passes. All commissioners voting yes.
There is a need for executive session. There's two items, litigation and labor. What's the will of the board? Moved by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Morgan, to go into executive session for litigation and labor. Please vote.
Motion passes. All commissioners voting yes.
And again, we're going to executive session for litigation and labor.
Motion.
So moved.
Both sent by Commissioner Morgan, second by Commissioner Kavanaugh. Please vote.
Motion passes. Commissioner Duda is absent, Commissioner Boyle is absent. Oh, here they are.
Are you going to the next committee meeting? Are you guys starting right now?
11:30. You're a yes, Commissioner Boyle and Commissioner Duda. All right. You can do whatever you want to do. All right, motion passes. All commissioners present voting yes.